Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2016. At this time, we invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of May 4th be approved.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 49A-16, the amount of $73,079.64 payroll. Warrant 49B-16, the amount of $62,538.18, accounts payable. Warrant 49C-16, the amount of $1,088,144. That's another DI?
Yes, last is just the D.
Okay. Warrant number 50A-16, the amount of $77,346.25 payroll. Warrant 50B-16, the amount of $48,472.71, dated June 8th. The previous, the first three I read were dated June 1st. And the two I've already read are June 8th. And the final one, warrant 50C-16, the amount of $61,244.80, also dated June 8th, be approved.
I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That approval of the warrants passes unanimously. Correspondents. Tonight, we have a piece of correspondence from Selectmen'sグラffitis to the Dyton residents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to take a moment to remark, unfortunately, about the rather reprehensible graffiti that was found on a development sign last week. This type of behavior and thinking is not reflective of the good, decent, caring, loving people that live in Dyton. It's not reflective of the neighborly and respectful way with which our residents have always treated one another. Our town is unlike any other because our residents care and look after one another. In this town, our town, we are our brothers and sisters keeper. We honor diversity and inclusion in Dyton. And I will not tolerate this narrow-minded, us versus them, thinking in our town. I ran for Selectmen to bring people together to solve some of our most pressing problems, not to highlight our differences or to try to divide our town. So, to the person or persons responsible for this shameful action, if you are watching this, please know that it is you and you alone whose backwards thinking has no place in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Brett.
Well said. Next on the agenda, announcements. We have trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. You may call (508) 669-6431 for more information. There is a prescription drug drop box now located at the Dyton Police Station. It is limited to pill form prescriptions only. You may contact the Dyton Police Station at (508) 669-6711 for more information. The Board of Selectmen is now on their summer meeting schedule. The next meeting will be June 22nd, 2016. If needed, there will also be a Board of Health meeting that same night. Senator Mark Pacico will hold an office hour at Town Hall on June 21st from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. in the Selectmen's meeting room. Call the Selectmen's office if you would like to make an appointment to talk to Senator Mark Pacico. The Dyton Public Library has museum passes available for residents with a library card. They are available on a first come, first served basis. You can reserve them by phone, in person, or online. Passes include Buttonwood Park Zoo, Battleship Cove, Museum of Science, the Salem Witch Museum, the Mystic Aquarium, the Hall at Patriot Place, and others. Go to www.dytonlibrary.org for more information. Special Town Meeting, followed by our annual Town Meeting, will be Monday, this coming Monday, June 13th, beginning at 6:30 p.m. for the Special Town Meeting and 7:00 p.m. for the Annual Town Meeting. Dyton Food Bank Distribution will be on Saturday, June 18th, 8:30 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Taunton Area Vietnam Vets will hold a cruise night behind Town Hall on Saturday, June 25th, beginning at 3:00 p.m. Anyone have any other announcements?
No.
Any old business?
No old business.
No old business. Under new business, first on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on the resignation letter of James Ready. We have a letter addressed to the Board of Selectmen. Dear Board of Selectmen, it is with regret that I tender my resignation from the Dyton Cable Committee and Advisory Board, also the Disaster Committee, effective immediately. I am grateful for having had the opportunity to serve on the board and work with some great people for the past 32 years. And I offer my best wishes for its continued success. Sincerely, James J. Ready. Thirty-two years is an awful long time. And along with Ed Only, Jim has been one of the pioneers of cable in this town. When they were over at the high school, when they used to go over to Berkeley to broadcast. He's been a great influence on the success of the cable as we now see it. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to accept the resignation of James Ready from the Dyton Cable Committee and Advisory Board and the Disaster Committee with regret.
Thanks, so moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ready, so moved. I second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act to appoint Jack Taylor to the Open Space Committee. We have a request from Jack Taylor for an open position on the Open Space Committee. Jack was on the Open Space Committee and for some reason needs to be reappointed. So, I will entertain a motion to appoint Jack Taylor to the Open Space Committee.
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The ayes have it. That motion carries.
This one is good for a year, right? So, we won't have to appoint him when we do the list next time?
Hmm, no, no. Thank you. Next agenda item is to review, discuss, and act to appoint Jack Taylor again, this time to the Cable Committee. Jack has also requested that he be put on the Cable Committee. We just lost one member and now we're going to gain another member.
I'll make a motion to appoint Jack Taylor to the Cable Committee.
And I will second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have a request from our Highway Superintendent for the buyback of vacation time and sick time. To the Board of Selectmen, from Thomas Ferry, Superintendent of Streets, please consider me buying back 80 hours of my vacation time and 144 hours of my unused sick time. First of all, this is not a contractual matter with Mr. Ferry. As in the past three or four years, he's always asked to buy back hours of vacation, which has been negated. It's not part of one of his benefits. So, at this time, if you'd like to make a motion not to allow Superintendent Ferry to buy back 80 hours of vacation time.
What's the sick leave part of that?
Well, sick leave, you'll have to see the town accountant to verify that.
Is that something that if he has sufficient, he can buy it back?
Yes.
Yes, he does it on the yellow basis.
Oh, okay.
All he has to do is submit his payroll.
Okay.
I will make a motion to deny the request for 80 hours of vacation time buyback by, requested by Mr. Ferry.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
I do want to ask, is he not able to roll over any of his vacation time?
Eighty hours, yes.
Okay.
He has to request that at the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So, he could make that request for our next meeting, before the end of June? Okay.
Tom knows the procedure.
Okay, okay.
But he goes through his procedure every year.
Oh, okay, all right.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. That motion carries to deny Mr. Ferry 80 hours of buyback vacation time. Next on the agenda, review, discuss, and act on ComStar President Rick Martin to discuss Dyton ambulance billing procedures. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we have President Mr. Richard Martin, who is the CEO, manager of ComStar Ambulance Billing Services, along with Fire Chief Tony Roderick. We've asked Mr. Martin to appear tonight to kind of clarify the procedures that his company goes through in collecting insurance claims and those that are not insured, how we get reimbursed for ambulance runs, and some questions about accounts receivable. So, at this time, I would ask Mr. Martin and the Fire Chief if they'd like to come up and sit up here so that we can all ask our questions. We also have in attendance our town accountant, Jen Louise, who will without a doubt have some questions that she might need answered. First of all, Mr. Martin, I'd like to thank you for coming tonight. There has been some, some rather questions that we had that weren't very, very sure of the whole procedure of how this, this works. I know we've gotten and offloaded a lot of paperwork and results and graphs and spreadsheets, but we asked you to come here, maybe it's a little, a little better for us to see it face to face. How, how does this actually work as far as, we understand that when an ambulance goes out, there's, there's a number presented as to the run of, of that call. Our own firefighters make sure that all the information is acquired and put together for billing purposes, whether it be insurance companies, third-party billers, workman's comp, whatever. But from there on, it gets a little fuzzy because it seems like we're dealing with three companies, but we really aren't dealing with three companies. ComStar is the number one.
We do all the reporting for the entire revenue cycle, revenue collection cycle for the town. There is another party involved for the more aggressive collection work that you may ask to be done for debts that we can't collect. So, there is a third party involved, but all the reporting is done, is consolidated in the ComStar reporting.
Excuse me, one second, Mr. Chairman. I just want to interrupt you. I just, this is Chairman Dean Cronin, this is Selectman Nancy Gulat, just so you know who you're referring to.
Nice to meet you all, yes.
And that's Selectman Brett Graffitis over there.
Thank you.
And our town accountant, Jen Louise, is over there.
Great.
Just so you can acquaint yourself.
Okay.
I figured I'd take a minute just to introduce everybody that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think where it starts to get confusing, especially for me, is you people initiate the whole billing process by contacting the insurance companies and, you know, in the case of when people have no insurance, you're contacting them. What is the extent and the timeframe that you allow before you pass it on or go to other measures?
The, the process begins with a, the patient care report that the crew has prepared. It has all the information that they can gather that would be necessary to document the patient event and all the demographic information, names, addresses, insurance, if they can get it. That comes to us electronically in a data file, which we import into our billing system. The first step of our process is to verify addresses, make sure they're a deliverable address. We check that against the U.S. Postal Service database. If there are any anomalies, we can, we will resolve that. The next step is to verify the insurance information that was provided. We contact the carrier, make sure there is coverage on that date of service. The goal here is to submit a clean claim to the carrier and do as much as we can in advance so that the claim goes in, gets paid, and the town gets their funds as soon as possible. We, we have multiple procedures to verify insurances, check addresses. Once that work is done, we're submitting those claims electronically to all the carriers. And the, the response times vary from carrier to carrier. Medicare has a legislated 14 days, which they're pretty good about sticking with. Other payers can vary from 30, 60, 90. Some of the government retired, retired government worker health programs could take 99 months. That's the extreme. The good news is you don't, in the big scheme of things, that's a very small percentage of your receivables. The, so from a claim submission standpoint, it can range from the 14 days up, up to the most extreme term, depending on the product. Once the, and we know these by payer and our system is, is set up such that we know when to start following up with the carrier and knowing their payment cycles. And that is part of our process as well. If we don't hear from them, we will follow up. But typically, the carriers are responding with something, a payment or some explanation for why there is no payment. The most common is it went against the patient's deductible. And then we, we would start the billing process to the patient. That billing process consists of a sequence of mailings, bills with, with also an insurance questionnaire on the back in case they have additional, a secondary insurance. And the same process is used for a patient for, for some reason, there is no insurance. After the, the crew members do their work, we also have an insurance search function. If the crew members were not able to attain it at the time of the transport or from the receiving hospital, we have databases that we can search, all done in advance. So, let's say there is either a balance that is unpaid by insurance due to a deductible, maybe there's a copay involved, or maybe there is no insurance. All three of those scenarios, we would initiate a billing sequence to the patient. A first bill, if there's no response, it's 30 days. A second bill, if there's no response after that, after 30 days, a third bill. If there's no response to that, we would send them a collection letter. And if they do not respond to that, at that point, the scope of our billing and collection services has been completed. It would, that account would be put on a request for disposition report, which would identify all the particulars of the transport and the reason, a reason code with, with, with a short description of what the circumstance is. Could have been no response to the collection letter. There, there are varying reasons that we, we have pre-programmed in our system that our billers can assign. And then that, and that report is presented to the town. We do our reporting on a monthly basis as far as this type of reporting, as well as a full reconciliation of all the account activity from a, from an accounting standpoint. So that every month, we're reporting at a summary high level and then right down to the transaction detail, all the debits and credits that go into, that result from our activities.
So, this monthly report?
It's a report package of several reports.
Who gets this report?
It's all sent to the chief.
Okay. So, he would have
And then he makes distribution.
Paul's reports dating back, you know, through the years?
Correct. We've been working with the town since 2006. Our, we've, we've probably made some improvements to our reporting over the years, but the, the core reconciliation package, disposition request reporting, that, that has been intact for the entire term.
Do you keep copies of these reports as well?
Elect, we can, we have the ability to reproduce all of these. We, we, we keep the transaction history for the required seven years. That's a Medicare requirement. And that, that's typically satisfy, pretty much all the Medicare regulations will satisfy any other payer. So, by hearing to that for all payers, the answer is yes. Any report that we can't recreate, the only report that we can't recreate in the future is the aging report itself, that point in time report that says how much is owed with a detailed list of who owes. So, those, we will scan to a PDF and save. So, long and short of it, yes, we keep, we keep full record retention for seven years.
When does Experian, and then this other company?
FFR.
FFR?
On, on the disposition
Where do they come into this?
On the, on the request for disposition report, where we're indicating that ComStar has exhausted all of its fairly comprehensive billing and collection activities, there are a series of options. You can report to the Experian Credit Bureau, which is part of our service. There's no additional fee to that. And if, if that is done, the, the debt is recorded against that patient. And typically, nothing will happen until maybe that person needs to do some borrowing or get an apartment where their credit is checked. And if, and usually the, the party checking will say, we need to have this matter cleared up before we move forward.
On the credit report, does it show that the money's owed to the town or to your company?
The, the creditor is always the town. ComStar is the reporting entity. All, all this activity that we do, we're doing on behalf of the town. All funds that are generated, if it's in form of a check, the checks are made out to the town. More and more payments are electronically made and they go direct into the town's account. So, with the exception of credit card payments where ComStar has one account, all the funds are collected for all clients, it goes into a trust account and we disburse checks back to the client. It's a very small percentage, but that's the only access we have to funds. So, virtually, ComStar has no direct access to the funds. But we, we do, we are, we're doing all the accounting for where those funds are.
This is where I start to lose a little comprehension there.
Okay.
I follow your agreement. And it's, it's legitimate and, you know, in the agreement, it says, uh, you will not bill any one ambulance run any more than three times. Patients that do not respond to the initial three bills will be placed with ComStar's in-house collection service. What is that?
That is our, we use a collection letter.
Oh, just a letter?
And then, if you select, if, if that doesn't result in collection, if you, we, we don't do it automatically. We always give you the choice. If you want us to report it to the credit bureau, we will do that. So, that, that is the extent of our in-house, what's described in that, that agreement.
When you say the credit bureau?
Experian.
Okay, that's different.
We use the Experian Credit Bureau.
That's different than FFR.
FFR is a separate option, a separate firm, which if, if you folks make that selection, the debt is sent, the information is sent to FFR. We keep it in a list categorized, sent to FFR. And now, FFR is the debt collector of record. And they perform their respectful, but, and within the regulations, but more aggressive pure debt collection work.
Does the town, Dyton, have a contract with FFR?
Yes, you do.
Yes.
So
Technically, they work directly for you. We, as part of our service, we send the data to FFR. If a payment is attained, let's say they collect $100, they will remit the funds less their fee. They charge a third. So, their funds will come in. We will post the whole entry. We will leave the receivable for $100. You'll get 66 and change in cash. And then the others, the balancing entry to that transaction would be basically an expense entry for their fee. And we, so that we can, you know, we will make a balance entry. So, we're doing all the reporting. So, they are technically a separate vendor to the town, but you don't have to manage them as a separate vendor in terms of paying them and accounting and recording all their activities. We do that as part of our service. And if anything that they collect, we do not take a fee on because we had collected.
Who owns FFR?
The gentleman's name is Larry Gordon. He owns FFR.
So
It's, ComStar has no equity interest in FFR. Several years ago, many of our municipal clients, we work with over 200 municipal clients throughout New England, over 100 in Massachusetts. A lot of them coming to me, in the big scheme of things, this type of debt is, for any individual service, is quite small from a debt collection perspective. It's not, I guess, real attractive piece of business. So, the thought was, Rick, do you have a recommendation? And I said, you do, you work with a lot of us. And I said, okay. I did the research and found a firm, a found what I thought to be the best firm in the area, and it happened to be a Massachusetts firm, in terms of experience with medical debt, experienced billing for private ambulance services, in terms of debt collection, and a very good track record. And I approached Larry Gordon, I said, would you develop a relationship with me? Here's the deal. I will recommend any client that asks for the service to you and you give my client the best deal you can possibly give them. And so, that's how the relationship was struck with Larry. Probably just about the time we started doing business with you folks. My relationship with Larry is about 10 years old. And I've, I've owned and operated ComStar for the last 16 years.
So, Experian really doesn't actively go after money?
It's a very, it's a passive
It's a deterrent because It's a deterrent because-
If that party has them, has means and looks to do anything financial, they're probably going to want a clean record of credit, so they will clear it up. That would, and more and more credit ratings are now very important to people. So if they have the money, that can shake it loose, yes, but it's a passive step, it's not, it's not active.
Does Experian notify the client that they have been reported?
No, we, as part of the collection letter, it is noted in the letter.
Oh, okay.
It's required that the, the party be notified in advance that this may happen if they do not respond. And then, so we satisfy that requirement of the, that collection regulations for the town by, by putting it in that letter. And then, so no, Experian doesn't make any direct contact. What they do is their database is available to lenders and anybody who has a practical business reason to check someone's credit.
So they don't, they don't, they offer, Experian would offer a client a, an application to take a loan from them?
No. You're talking about a, a lender would, would, would use Experian's database to check the credit rating of a potential borrower. So Experian offers the service, the data service, and, and we also pay them to give us, give them the data, they're getting on both ends.
So you, you had that listed on the Experian reporting, where you state a loan application and desire to clear up a mark on the credit report will trigger such payments?
Correct.
Who would initiate that loan application?
The, the person who owes the town money.
So if I apply for a credit card and I owed, I'm one of those people that you have billed repeatedly that I haven't, that I haven't responded and paid, and I apply for a credit card, whoever the issuer of the card is going to check my credit rating and see that I owe money.
They will, they will approach Experian or Equifax, another large reporting bureau.
Yeah.
Yes. And sometimes they chuck them off and then make a determination as to whether you're creditworthy. And very often, the terms of whatever the person is seeking is subject to clearing up any unsettled debts. So that's, that's the nature, the potential nature of that.
Dean, I did get copies of all this eight, from FFR, those eight different letters that they send out for collections, just sample letters, they gave me samples to review.
And they may not send all of those. It's scenario based, you know, those are all the different forms that they use, depending on the, on the particular circumstance.
They're just generic samples.
Mm-hmm.
They also do, they also make phone calls direct to the person as well. That's, that's, that's why, it takes it beyond what Comstar does. Comstar's, when we contact a patient, we're trying to give them information, help them out, it's a customer service contact. Usually, they initiate it. These folks are calling as the person looking for the money. We like to keep that separation so that our service, as a representative of the town, is a customer service oriented thing. And the debt collection, it's important, but it, it's a separate, it's a separate function.
So, I mean, I can only see FFR's letter. How is Comstar's collections letter different than the letters that FFR is sending?
The content, the wording is a little bit different, but the, the major components are the same because it is regulated as to what you need to say, the information you need to provide when you're, when you're notifying them that, hey, this is it, guys, we've sent all these bills now. Things may advance further in terms of collection activities if you don't respond. It also gives them, notifies them their rights to dispute the debt. It identifies who the debtor is, the town, all the required information. So our, I mean, looking at their form, our, our form is similar, I mean-
Is your in-house collections department just not capable of sending multiple collections letters, if that's all that FFR is doing?
It's not a service that we offer.
So you just send one letter as opposed to multiple?
That's correct.
You bill three times and send a letter?
Right. So we send a total of four correspondents to the patient.
And if you don't get any money, is the end result still you notify the credit bureau?
If you folks, we, the end result aft, after we've completed our billing and collection steps, it goes on the request for disposition report. The Experian reporting is one of the options. You, the town always makes the choice as to what accounts they want sent to FFR, reported to Experian, or there's also an option to write off the debt.
So you're looking at this list that I have here that starts in eleven fifteen oh five and this one goes through- Not everybody on this list was referred to FFR or got reported to Experian.
No, all of the, let me see, all of the, that is a list of all the patients that were sent to FFR at the direction of the town.
Oh, okay, all of these were, okay.
Correct.
When I, when I get them, I check both of them. That always goes to both.
Okay.
Now, point to be made, if, when the chief, if chief checks off both Experian and FFR, it's not appropriate for Comstar to report to Experian and then hand off the debt to FFR. Part of FFR's procedure, if they don't collect, they will report to Experian also. So it's one or the other.
Okay.
And, and that step is at the end of their process. And then same situation, they would be reported as the, the, the debt collector, however, the town is always reported as the creditor.
Exactly, for the question. So what you're saying is this, this account that's from November fifteen, two thousand and five, is that FFR had just been reported to the Experian?
We'd have to check each one, we'd have to ask FFR, I suspect at this point, they have finished with that one.
No, I think what you're asking right then is if, if, when they did the three collections letters or whatever they did, did it go to the credit bureau at the end?
No, no.
It went to FFR.
It goes to FFR and then FFR sends it to the collection agency.
Right.
So how do we know on this FFR list what has actually gone to, I mean, to Experian?
We'd have to, we'd have to ask them for some report to that effect.
Are they not consistently reporting to you?
No, they're not reporting, they're not reporting, they're only reporting payments to us.
Okay. So you kind of wash your hands once you send it to FFR?
So we really don't know when FFR is done with anything.
It, it, you, I guess you would have to ask for those reports and also don't really have any much bearing on the valuation that you'd put on that receivable. Two separate, two separate things.
Excuse me? Explain what you just said, because you lost me somewhere in that-
I'm a little confused. The value.
You put a val, would you just reiterate what you said?
The, when FFR is finished and the valuation on your rece, on your, the valuation of a receivable are, are not terribly related. The valuation is based on an accounting assessment of the probability of collection, the value of the asset.
Okay. I owe the town five hundred dollars for an ambulance run and I have not paid the town.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you know I have means to pay this. Maybe I don't have insurance, but financially, you know that I get a good credit rating and I could come up with this. For some reason, I'm not paying it. I'm ignoring it. So you do everything you can, then you send it to FFR. It's five hundred dollars. They're going to send out letters telling me my options, pay the five hundred in cash, check, credit card, whatever. Now explain why that five hundred dollars that I owe, and you're talking about the valuation not being the same. What, what do you mean by that? I don't understand. If I owe five hundred dollars, the value is five hundred dollars, until it's written off, in which case it becomes zero as far as a receivable goes.
I, I would defer it to your auditor and your town accountant. I'm an accountant too, but, you know, I've been, I've been operating Comstar for the last sixteen years, so I'm, I'm, that's not my business anymore. But valuation of an asset and the receivable is an asset is a matter of what is the probability, when you're talking about receivable, what is the probability of collection at the point in time you place the value on it? I agree, the gross value is five, five hundred dollars, but if you send three bills, a collection letter, sent it to FFR, and, and then look at the return rates at these various stages, okay? After Comstar is done, the collection rate Comstar achieves on behalf of the town is an overall eighty-eight percent of what is, is due to the town. Of all the receivables, and, and we work that very thoroughly, so what is the return on the debt that's sent to FFR? It's under ten percent. One, they are sifting through a lot to get a little. Number two, they are working debt that, and these pa, patients have already been contacted and there is some underlying reason. So the question of value, when Comstar is done, what's the value of that five hundred dollars from an accounting standpoint? Well, if the probability of collection is ten percent or less, and you're a conservative accountant, which I am, I'd value it zero. Okay?
So if it's not profitable for you, then you stop trying to collect, is what you're saying?
Excuse me?
If it's not profitable for you to keep trying to collect, then you wash your hands at it, is what you're saying?
It's not a matter of profitability, it's a matter of, I, the services that I'm contracted to perform.
But you're going to lose money to keep trying to collect that money that you just stated, is a very low probability for them to end up paying it.
No. I, I, I'm contracted to do a certain level of service for the town, which I completed, and the return rate is what it is. There's a certain amount of folks that aren't going to pay.
And it's the group that goes to FFR?
Right. And, and if, and the comment about valuation is, at a point in time, you know, number one, what, what is the valuation and where does that valuation come from? It's an, it's, it's a point in time assessment based on accounting principle. Now, in terms of why don't I pursue it any further? Because I finished all the steps I was contracted to perform. And I measured on the performance, I measure myself on the performance based on, you know, the, what we do collect. There's a certain percent, you know, hundred percent collection, I'd love to be, think that we could collect everything, but-
Based on what you said about my five hundred dollar example and it goes to FFR and you say the value as opposed to what the, the five hundred dollars, what the value of that five hundred dollars is, again, personal opinion, from an accounting standpoint, it's worth five hundred bucks until I get to the point that it says, there is no way you're going to get anything on this account.
Okay.
Its value becomes zero and my choice at that point is write it off.
I would defer it to your, your auditor and your town accountant to, you know-
Okay, I'm just making a simple accounting statement from standard practice. As long as I think there is a chance to collect, I'm hoping to get five hundred. When it's clear to me as the person waiting for the five hundred, as opposed to me, the person who's supposed to be paying it, when it is clear that it's not going to be paid, there's nothing I can do to collect it, its value becomes, it gets written off and it becomes zero. That's the value of that claim when it gets written off because the five hundred dollar charge is written off at five hundred dollars, period. Never going to get it, never going to collect it. So as the, the person listing accounts receivable, as an asset, what I had listed is a five hundred dollar asset as receivable, I wrote it off, it's gone. I just reduce my accounts receivable and my assets by five hundred dollars. Now, the question I have is, relative to the contract, I understand all the steps that are in the contract and what you agreed to do. What my question is, when you, your company can no longer, you've done your three letters, you've done your, you've done three bills and a collection letter and there's nothing. Why is there no protection in that contract for the town of Dayton? Because quite frankly, if I were going to sign this contract for this town, it would say, we would hire you, you're going to send three bills and you're going to send a collection letter. When nothing, you get back to us and say, sorry, we've done everything that we said we would do. The way that contract is presently written, my opinion is there's no protection for the town of Dayton because if there was a clause in there that said, "Town of Dayton, my company will do the billing, we will send three bills and a collection letter." And if in fact, we get no response at all, we will give this back to the town of Dayton so the town of Dayton can take action, including legal action if necessary, to collect that. What, what's happening is it's going on to somebody else.
Well, it is, from Comstar's standpoint, it is being given back to the town in terms of the disposition report.
Not when you have another company in there.
That's your vendor. You sent, the town engages it-
No, I will go back, I will go back to my original statement. There's no protection in this contract for the town of Dayton. And if I were asked to sign that contract, the way it's currently written, I'd say, no, you know what, Rick? Forget FFR, forget whatever. At the point it's clear to you, Comstar, you cannot collect this money, in the report that comes back to the town on a monthly basis, it will clearly state, "Town of Dayton, I've done everything I could under the terms of the agreement, I'm sending it back to you now so you can take action." When I see, we've got a receivable that started in oh five and it's up to two thousand-
We, in fact, do that every month. It is called the request for disposition report. That is our statement to the town that we cannot collect, these are debts that we cannot collect after exhausting all of our-
I've never seen one.
But, but my-
We send it every month, both a current month report stating, here are accounts that turned into that status in this month, and then a cum to date report showing all of those that have turned into that status in the past. The only time it leaves that report is if you folks decide to send it to FFR. So we are doing that reporting, absolutely, that is, that's part of our service.
That's, yeah, right. It comes, it comes back and that's how it was, when it was set up before.
You don't, all right.
In our, our contract-
You don't send it to the town and tell them?
Absolutely gives the town ultimate authority and we provide very comprehensive reporting to tell you where we are at every step of the way. So I, you know, I respectfully-
I do know, the, the explanation that you sent us, March twenty ninth, I think that was one of the first times we contacted you with this, you know, uncertainty. I mean, it was pretty clear after, if I had stopped after you defined your rule, I would have been crystal clear. But once I got into the Experian and the FFR-
Yeah.
To me, all that was, that, both of them were just window dressing. Because you hit the nail on the head when you described your job description and your final sentences, once you're completed, any uncollected balance should be considered doubtful of collecting.
That's, that's a, that's a conservative accounting approach.
And I, and I appreciate that. So for us to even waste time with FFR and Experian, that's like window dressing. Because you, with your experience, you know you're not, we're not going to collect Venus.
But one of the values of it is, from, and your auditors would probably agree, it's a final due diligence step so that you can say to anybody who asks, why didn't you collect this, you can respond with, what else could we have done? We have executed just every step available. But yes-
Totally understand.
At the point it's going to FFR, it's pretty doubtful.
We'll get that.
But you don't, you don't pay anything in terms of your costs, other than the time to check off the box, you don't pay anything unless there's a collection. So there's no downside for you to do that. But again, as to when you recognize that the valuation has changed, I think that's a matter of policy, it's a matter of accounting opinion and you merge those two together and then you execute. That's what all, all my other municipal clients do and it's, it's, it's part of the housekeeping of receivables management.
Without naming names of clients or anything, tell me how many clients numerically you have that have accounts receivable that are over ten years open and that total somewhere in the neighborhood of, well, this latest one, three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars?
It's, it's a very small percentage. Most of my municipal clients have a policy in place that deals with this matter. It's pretty common.
How many of them use the FFR?
I would say of the total of our two hundred municipal clients, approximately sixty percent. There are, some clients use other, you know, their own resources, some use the local tax collector function. There's a number of variations. This one is most convenient, the, the idea of all the reporting in one- This one is most convenient, the idea of all the reporting in one spot, if they send it to someone else, then ComStar's not involved at all if there's payment involved, and you're basically managing a separate service provider. So, there's a pro and con to both, but, you know, we can, we can, we can do it either way.
You do have clients that, in effect, go through, what you do for them is three bills and a collection letter, doesn't go any further, you write, notify the town, we've sent the three bills, you send the collection letter, we've got nothing. It goes back to the town, and then the town takes action to collect the money.
We do have someone who do it on, yes, who have, who don't use FFR, they use another resource, and they will say, Rick, ComStar, instead of sending the data file to FFR, send it to XYZ firm, or XYZ attorney, or, or the, maybe the firm that they've engaged for other collection work for the town, taxes and so forth. There's a number of variations, so...
And that's what my concern is, in, in the contract, that there is no option specifically stating, if all attempts to collect this money by ComStar, by the notification to the client, you're gonna report this to Experian or whoever, and FFR gets it. There's nothing in there that states, after all of these steps are taken, in other words, Town of Dayton, you're the client, you can take all these options. And then the final one is, and if all of these fail, it will come back to you. But the problem we're dealing with, in effect, is because the amount of money is so large, and it's so old, the Town of Dayton's options to now collect this money using the kinds of legal and appropriate collection methods that a municipality can use under the law, it's not gonna happen. I mean, it's too old, it's just ancient.
Well, my, I guess my question, what will, would you do that has already been done, between my client, my firm's work and FFR's work? You could have somebody else do it, redo it, but I, I don't see that, this work, this, all this work was done in a timely manner. The only thing that hasn't been done over the past ten years is, on the town's books, they haven't recognized that the value of this asset, a certain portion of this asset is no longer there.
Are you saying, you, you send monthly reports, and those reports contain ambulance-run numbers that should be written off on a monthly basis?
They, we don't tell you to write off, that's, I mean, that, that's not our role. That should be done, is appropriate to have a separation of responsibility between...
The disconnect where I explained before was, FFR has, has not sent us a notification, they're done, there was, there were no more collections taken in on, say, XYZ run number. That's...
A fair number of our clients, based on their own auditors' recommendation, and I've heard that recommendation enough that I will pass it along to anyone because I think it's valid, if you're sending it to FFR, you should also write it off your asset value. They can continue their work, and if, and if they do make a collection, you restore the receivable that was collected and recognize it then, but to keep the full value on the books while they have it, it overstates the receivable amount. And, and that's, I think, any auditor's opinion would be that, that's the case. So, when the percentage of collection drops below X point, and I think ten percent or less is below that line, that would be a trigger point. So, we have many of our clients who, it's an automatic, it's a combination step that's done. When you check off, report to FFR, we will also write it off, so it's not on the ComStar list anymore. So, you, and that's the, probably the value that you carry on your, the town's books. However, there is still a firm working and doing what is, I believe to be very thorough, state-of-the-art procedures to try and collect aggressively but respectfully collect debt. But you're only recognizing the value of their results when they actually succeed, given that the probability is so low. That's a good conservative way to go, and it's a procedure that many of our clients have adopted over the years.
So, I understand what you're saying. You're basically saying, after we get done with it, there's a low, if it's not collected, if it remains uncollected, there's a low likelihood that it'll be collected. Is that what you're saying?
Correct. When that probability gets down to a certain point, it triggers a valuation decision to either discount it or write it off fully.
Great.
But from an activity standpoint, but from a valuation standpoint.
So, the people watching tonight are probably not as well-versed in accounting as you, so I wanna try to put this in layman's terms. So, you are the most important step, basically, you are the critical step, because after you, if it doesn't get collected, it's probably not gonna get collected. Is that accurate?
If, yes.
Okay.
That's, that's a fair statement in terms of probability.
Great. So, then what leverage do you have to collect, other than the four pieces of paper you're sending?
Leverage? I don't understand what you mean by leverage.
What's the incentive to pay?
What cloak do you have?
Yeah. Besides those, these papers, what leverage do you have?
None.
So, these people, so you're sending letters knowing that they're probably not gonna pay because you don't have leverage, or, or there's no incentive, you're not incentivizing them. And I think what Selectman Gulart was saying, and I believe what Ms. Louise said as well, is that if we were collecting in-house, we would have leverage. If we, if the Town of Dayton had the authority to do something about the collections, for example, liens, things like that, you have a higher likelihood of getting the money back.
What some of our clients have done, to your point, is yes, ComStar is a third party. These, the townspeople don't have any allegiance to us. That collection letter, some of our clients have taken the collection letter that we use and customized it, and said, and to the, to the point where it looks like it's coming directly from the town. Your letter had a signature you want on it, you could give us that in a PDF file, we can put that into our billing system and then just create variables for the patient name and the particular information. And that is an approach where, in a community where most of the transports are done for residents, and you can, it also gives the option, I have to word it a certain way because I'm a third party. As the first party, you can, you have great discretion, you could appeal to this sense of responsibility, you could do any number of things.
But my problem with that, with that, is it's still just a piece of paper. There's, we still can't do anything. It's just, it's literally words on a piece of paper.
Yes, you have other, yes, you're correct, you do have other options, you can use, small claims is effective for people who live locally, you do have the lien option.
Who would pay for the small claims?
In terms of the filing?
Would, would the Town of Dayton have to pay to go to court to get the money?
You would file the claim, and if you were successful, you would get all your expenses plus whatever you filed for.
And we do have, some, some of our clients do that locally, some use liens, some assign...
Some who can, based on their contract, right?
No.
No, they can't, they can't do it.
At all times.
The municipality could do it. One of the things...
At all times, you, you, you have ultimate control of this debt. There is language in our agreements, and anytime you can say, Rick, we're gonna take this back. Or you can just tell me, Rick, after these steps, we're gonna take it back. It's a matter of establishing policy and doing it.
I'll speak for myself, Ms. Selectman Cronin and Selectman Gulart can speak for themselves. I don't feel like I'm in control of this debt.
You gotta, you gotta get involved.
I feel like this was just a paper that was dropped on my desk one day.
It was.
We have been providing this information to the town, comprehensive, for over ten years.
I just got this information.
I want to clarify something. You have not been providing it to the Town of Dayton, because the Town of Dayton are the three elected officials this city. You have provided it to the head of the department, and I will stop there. I will refer back to this audit report that in effect says, since medical liens have never been placed on these accounts, medical liens are something that this town could have done. And when I say this town, I'm talking about, had we known about this, whoever was sitting up here, working with either the tax collector, or working with town council, and maybe just going with the town accountant and say, which ones do we take to small claims court and get the forms? You don't even need a lawyer for that. Do a whole bunch by small claims court, and if we have some that are beyond whatever the dollar limit is, which I don't even know what that is, but, those would be ones that a municipal, what's it, medical lien, as was referred to in this audit report. If this audit had not been conducted, we still wouldn't know about this, and this three hundred and some odd thousand would probably be closer to five hundred thousand. And it just keeps growing. This is what is so frustrating. And I gotta tell you, now I'm gonna speak personally, before I was back on this board as a selectman since last September, I've served umpteen years on the finance committee. I have sat through budget discussions year after year after year. I have voted to approve, raise and appropriate articles on a finance committee recommendation, not knowing this kind of money was out there and was never gonna be collected, and yet the motion is raise and appropriate? Had I known this, I never would have supported that, because raise and appropriate says to the taxpayers, come up with the dough to fund a project, a program, personnel, whatever, in the fire department. I'm back on the board as a selectman, having just left the finance committee, I'm looking at this, I can't believe what I'm looking at, okay? I, that's why I looked at your contract, and I said, where's the protection for the Town of Dayton? These are so old, you can't place a medical lien on these. There's nothing in there that in effect says, Town of Dayton, when ComStar is all done, it's gonna go this direction. I mean, we, we're headed for town meeting next Monday night. I mean, this is public information, this is being broadcast, broadcast publicly tonight, it has come up at public meetings we've had. And I'm still looking at this saying, what do we say to the voters in Dayton, the taxpayers, about raising, every time I hear the word raise and appropriate, if I know that there is a three hundred and some odd thousand dollars accounts receivable, if this were my business, not a municipality, and I had a, I would never have had an accounts receivable that old, number one. Number two, what I wrote off would be minimal. Right now, the Town of Dayton is looking at the potential of writing off probably...
Close to four hundred.
It keeps growing, but even if we just go with what's out at a hundred and twenty days, three hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars, I gotta tell you, that's a fortune in this town. It's, I can remember a year we had to come up with eighty-three thousand because the state cut our state aid, that was a monumental nightmare. We made it, and yet, writing this off?
To, to look at the complete picture, you need to look at what was collected. Almost ninety percent of what was billed was collected, and there, and you need to look at these statistics from, in the medical collection field, for what is a good collection And then, that will put the whole thing in perspective, so you can look at one side...
You're not at ninety percent. I'm sorry, you're not at ninety percent.
You may be under the way you interpret this, not the way that we look at this. You are not at ninety percent. A ninety percent collection rate would indicate, we aren't looking at possibly writing off three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars before this fiscal year ends June the thirtieth.
That's an accumulation of ten years. And, and the statistics I'm giving you are accurate.
Let me ask you this, you, you have over two hundred municipalities on your books. How many, what's the percentage of municipalities that have accounts receivable that are ten years old, still out there?
Very few, most of them.
Very few.
Most of them have...
Wouldn't that have run a bell that something is wrong here? That nothing's been, being done?
I would think so.
This letter that we got was the first, I've been here, this is my sixth year, I knew nothing about this. Nothing about these accounts receivable. Yet, you're saying you send a monthly report.
Have you seen one, Jen?
Just the report that I gave you, that's what I see every month.
That we got last month, right?
I can't speak to the accounting practices of, of the town in terms of how they value their assets. We've reported everything meticulously for the last ten years.
So, there are reports in this town somewhere, for all of these?
Absolutely.
So, there are a hundred and twenty reports?
So, you have all those reports?
One for each month?
I have to take them out year by year, and anyone that he doesn't have, the month tonight that we don't have, but Jen...
A full reconciliation of everything.
Three years, four years.
Aging requisitions.
Disposition report, all it says is where it goes to Experian or FFR, which has been in whatever the, the contract says is when it was in, and put in place.
So, what is the, what is the form that tells you what accounts to write off?
To write off, we don't write anything off.
Or recommend, excuse me, recommend to write off. What's that form?
It's a cumulative disposition report to either write it to, to check it off, write it off, which we don't write it off, because we want it to go to the most aggressive way to go, like Rick said, to either Experian or FFR. And all, they, they all go to both of them.
Well, what about these, how about the two that you gave us to write off two weeks ago, that were still, still in possession of ComStar? They hadn't been to the others yet.
The only ones that I suggest and give to the board for write-off are either the hardship request form that they fill out, that they send to, from ComStar, that you sent out as a hardship, is that what they call it, Rick?
If a patient contacts us and expresses hardship, the first thing we'll do is offer them a payment plan. If they say, no, I can't afford that either, we say, well, we have a form we can send you, and you can request for a hardship waiver. They complete that form, return it to us, we present it to the town for their consideration.
Before it even gets to the other two.
Right. Hardship request, they can't afford to pay for it, and they're usually town residents. So, that's my, there's a hardship request, death, there's no estate, that's the ones that I send to the board for, for write-off. The other ones go to FFR and the credit bureau, because that was the, at the time, that was what we, we did as far as the most aggressive, like Rick explained, to achieve what we did, to try to get, say, listen, we did everything we could to try to capture what we could capture.
So, every month, you do get a report though, that's recommend, recommending, in that report is a recommendation for a write-off, and you get that every month, right?
It doesn't, no, it doesn't say recommend to write off, you pick if it says, this collection, it says, no response to collection, the ComStar's collection letter, no response.
But I thought you had stated before that you, correct me if I'm wrong, by the way, I thought you had said that the outsor, whatever private company it was, tells you what write-offs to submit. I remember, am I wrong? I feel like I might be crazy.
Tells me what write-offs?
Yes.
That's what I just said to you, as far as the ones that suggested, as far as a hardship request form that's filled out with the proper documentation, or death, no estate, there would be no, nothing, those are the obvious ones, that's the ones I submit to you.
So, none of these...
Have, no, all those ones have...
Like, I just, FFR never sent anything from our accounts from ten years ago? I just don't understand.
The typical scenario is, whether it's me as a billing agent, or any, any firm, you're provided with information on status, and then you have a policy, you, meaning the town, has a policy of what triggers certain events, based on status. The question, no, so, you take the information, the status information, and you apply your local policy. So, it's a matter of having it, applying it.
I a hundred percent agree with you that in theory, that sounds great, but I will remind you that I just received this document on May eleventh. So, I didn't even know these existed, so how can I recommend things to be written off or do write-offs if I don't even know they exist?
Policy itself would be something that, I don't know, should be...
Should the policy be, we have to see it?
You, you develop the policy, you could get advice from your, your auditor for what that policy might entail, what would be reasonable, you could check with other municipalities on the policies that they use, but the vast majority of my clients have a stated policy for how they disposition or when they will write off, and then, it's, and then it's applied by any designated people.
In the other municipalities that you deal with, is it their policy that the fire department is submitting those reports to the Board of Selectmen?
Uh, generally...
How else would they know, right?
Generally not.
Oh, so then how do the Board of Selectmen know what to write off?
Generally, the, the opinions are rendered by the accounting function.
Okay, but Jen just stated that she's never received a report, so how is Jen gonna, it's the same question, how would Jen know?
At some point, somebody of authority in the town has to establish a policy.
Which we have to have.
And then, then you execute that policy, so you have discretion as to what that policy... So you have discretion as to what that policy is. And you could consult people who are expert or versed in that field and are in the business of providing opinions on this, as to what a good policy would be. Whether it will meet a county principal, that meets the standards of municipal government. And your audit firm can do that for you. I'm sure your town accountant is familiar with policies based on her experience. You can formulate your own. There's no right or wrong answer. It's whatever, works for the town, and then get the opinion of your attorneys, your accountants, your auditors, as to, is this reasonable?
Yeah.
Then you publish it, and you go forward and execute.
Well, I just want to add, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman, that, policy or not, had I been given this document, you know, sooner than last month, you know, we probably could have done something like that. And I'm sure that whether we had a policy or not, had we been given these accounts piecemeal, we absolutely, most likely, would have dealt with these accounts every month, let's say. So, on some level, the problem is that the board of selectmen and our accountant is not being, giving the information to make decisions about. I can't make a decision on something if I don't know the problem exists. Does that make any sense?
But...
We shouldn't have to make up a policy that states that the fire chief should give us the information we need to make important decisions, especially when it's this expensive.
I think you do. You need, every, every organization needs procedures, documented procedures on what, what the protocol is.
Totally agreed, but on some level, this is, I'll just speak for myself, it seems sort of like common sense to not wait ten years to drop a document on your desk and then tell you, there's a problem to fix. I don't understand why there needs to be a very specific policy to do something that you know you have to take care of. And I know that's out of your purview, because you're not making the policy.
Rick, I have a question for you. This is the list that F R, F R, FFR...
Yes.
Has these counts assigned. And they start in November of oh five and go to, through fifteen, I believe. You said that in your three billings and collection letter, if you are notified by the client, excuse me, the person you are, the person's got to pay the bill, that, I don't have insurance, or I can't, I can't pay the copay, all I got is Medicare, so that's all you're going to get. You give them a form and say, fill this form out, and that would be a hardship, if, or the only thing available was Medicare. And the balance that's left, they can't pay, they don't have a second insurance, or, in the meantime, the person's deceased, so that there's a balance, but somebody for the estate fills out a form and says, you know, there's, there's nothing here. If that procedure is followed in all of the claims, why are all of these things saying, no insurance? If it went to, it shouldn't have gone to FFR, because you would have known there was no insurance. No, no response to three bills in the collection letter. So I don't understand.
I think that's that, no further insurance.
Is that what it says?
Does that say no?
No insurance, no response to three bills.
So my question is, why did these even go to FFR if in fact, your company determined there was no insurance, there was no response to three bills in the collection letter? Because to me, that would trigger, do these, should this person fill out a hardship form and explain that? But according to this, this whole list went on to FFR. Does FFR ever come up with a form, it's a hardship form? Do they do what you do, or they don't?
That's what I noticed, no, no, they don't.
Right, so all these that say there's no insurance, these should have been called at your level. I, I don't understand.
Caught for what?
No insurance, no response to three bills in a collection letter.
That was reported to, folks. And the town made the decision to send them to FFR. Comstar doesn't make that decision.
That's what Tony checks off and...
So Tony is the town in this case?
Yes, every time it says the town, that's what he records to Tony.
Because, like Nancy was saying, I agree, I think you said, instead of having, I mean, putting a lien, that was the FFR and the Experian part of it that goes on the credit. So it's, I mean, in one form or another, it still puts the person on notice that, listen, this is a collections letter, we need to try to finish paying this bill off. Can we come up with a payment schedule, or are we going to pay it off, or whatever it is? And you go through the two steps.
These are all patients that did not respond. None of the patients on here responded with, I can't afford this, I have a hardship. If that was the case, that form would have been presented to the chief, and then he handles that differently.
That's, that's why you put this statement in, in your explanation, that it appears the town of Dayton only has a write off policy that pertains to patient hardships. You assumed that, right?
Based on my, based on my discussion with the chief on, on what he is proactively writing off, he's addressing the hardships, the death, no estate type situations, the ones where it's...
The ones that are obvious, that I can't...
And in most cases, municipalities are compassionate to those circumstances.
If you're writing off the obvious, then there's about two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars worth of them, that are real obvious.
Not, not saying that, because we still get on, I mean, I don't know how it affects...
This gentleman just said, a very low percentage of municipalities that he services has accounts receivable going back that far.
But there are some.
There's got to be, a red flag's got to go up. You never thought to come to us, to, to the board, or the accountant, and say, look at it, this, this thing is dominoing. This thing is...
That's, that's part of that aging report that, that I give you, that I give Jen, that shows that, that it, it keeps going. And that's what Rick was saying, that the auditor, along with the accountant, should say, listen, this is where we need to, we need to review it.
No, no, this town accepted the strong chief law. Neither an outside auditor, or the town accountant, or this board sitting here can take action to write off one line from this report without your recommendation in writing with a reason for doing it. So the auditor was doing the audit...
Right.
Could not tell us, she can't, and this board can't even vote.
But I can't tell you to write them off, Nancy, either, if I haven't got any notification from FFR.
But you don't let it go ten years. You don't let it go ten years.
Have you ever asked the FFR for a report on any of these?
No, because they haven't...
See what's going on with them?
No, because they, they said that they're, they were still actively working on them.
All right, but what, Rick, what, your primary collector...
They haven't said they weren't active.
Have you ever asked what your...
No, I haven't asked.
You didn't ask them specifically, Karen?
Your primary collection agency has said tonight, they send three bills, they send a collection letter. If you check the box, Experian gets notified, and FFR goes that route. He also said, what you should probably do, when I send three bills and a collection letter and can't collect the balance, you probably should write them off at that point. FFR can still chase them, and they would come back as the receipt, but you would not be carrying this huge accounts receivable. Accounts receivable is an asset. This is a misstatement, a gross misstatement of the assets of this town. It's over three hundred thousand. There's something else I wanted to ask you about. In this audit report, there's a section called credit balances. Per our review of the Comstar reports, we discovered eight situations amounting to six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars, in which a credit balance exists. All of these were over a year old. It appeared that most were either a result of an overpayment, or could be credited against an outstanding balance in another related account.
The second's not true.
The rest of that statement is, we suggest the fire chief, in conjunction with Comstar, analyze these credit balances and determine if money should be returned to the patient, or adjustments should be made to the patient records. Has this taken, taken place, this reconciliation?
The credit balances at any point in time, there are a couple, there are circumstances where insurance companies will double play a claim or overpay. If it's a patient, I guarantee you, they've been paid back because we submit a voucher request to the chief to cut the check to the patient. When it comes to insurance companies, many of them do not want a check, they have no mechanism to handle a check, they will retract from a future payment. So our responsibility is to notify those folks, and then wait for them to take their money. Some never do.
Take their money from?
A future payment. These are insurance companies...
Or can they apply for a refund from the town of Dayton?
That's not how the insurance carriers work. The major ones, Blue Cross, Medicare, Medicaid...
They're overpayments.
You are refunding?
They, like, they got double payments, it depends on who overpaid, if it was a person or if it was...
Here's a, a common scenario would be...
Who are you refunding on this warrant? A person or an insurance company?
I'm not sure what time it's on.
It was a company, it wasn't an individual, I guess.
We know, based on the payer, what their recovery mechanism is if they have overpaid. Some will want a, a check, and then we will submit that check request to the town with proper documentation. The same is true for a patient. If the patient is the one who overpaid, it's not uncommon for someone to get a bill, make a payment, then somebody else in the family says, oh, we have insurance on this. So we submit to insurance. Once insurance pays, it creates a credit balance, then we notify the town to reimburse the patient. There are payers, some of the larger ones, who will make routine payments over, over a period of years, based on a number of people having their coverage. They do not want checks. Their mechanism is notify them, and then they will retract from a future payment. So on a future remittance advice, it'll pay ten patients, then they'll be taken back, the overpayment from the eleventh. And we account for all that. So in that case, there is no check to be cut, even if you wanted to pay them, and if you mailed them the check, they would send it back, because they have no mechanism to handle it. They have to react to our notification that it's been overpaid and retract. And it is a process that isn't perfect on their end. Sometimes they, it never gets processed.
Does Medicare or Medicaid ever overpay?
Why?
How do you handle that?
They are, they are two that will retract from a future payment. So the requirement is to notify them of the overpayment, and then they will retract from a future payment. Because in, in every given month, you have regular payments from Medicare and Medicaid, because between the two, that represents almost fifty percent of your receivables. So that flows pretty cleanly. We've got some, some carriers who, it, they just, they just never come in and take the funds. And we can, you know, if your auditor says, hey, this is getting, we can notify them again for you, but we can tell you right up front whether...
But currently, there's only like, this, this freedom of the house, it's only eight hundred dollars.
So this, most of the sixty, one hundred dollars has been reconciled?
Yeah.
But in, in no case would you take a credit balance and apply it to another account, because they're all separate patients. So that, that's a scenario that I never see. It's always a scenario where an individual account was overpaid for some reason, and we automatically make appropriate notifications. And in the case of a, of a retraction, where they have to come in and take it from a future payment, now it's incumbent upon that carrier to execute. And sometimes they don't, or it gets delayed substantially, or that paperwork that was sent in does not get processed properly on their end. And if it comes up in an audit situation, we can resend notices and so forth. But cutting a check likely will never get cashed, and then you're going to have another item to deal with in terms of an outstanding uncashed check. We don't, we don't put in requests for checks, we know that carriers don't accept them.
You know, the other, the other question that I had in looking at this, when I see total charges, amount allowed, and no, nothing paid, or in the case of the second line here in two thousand and six, the charge was eight hundred and forty-nine, somebody paid five hundred and twenty-eight, and there was three hundred and twenty-one dollars due. Looking at all of those numbers, and considering that Medicare has been required for a while, or if you don't have that, at least some of these more recent years, you have to have some kind of insurance. So why are there no credits at all? If, in other words, like the one that shows eight hundred and forty-nine allowed, five hundred and twenty-eight paid and a balance, I could look at that and say, oh, five hundred and twenty-eight, that's probably the Medicare payment or something. But there's no other ones like that, that are significant. And so I don't understand how there are so many zeros on this, because it would seem there should at least be the Medicare payment, or the Medicaid payment. And that isn't something that you build a person for.
There are all types of insurances. I mean, yeah, true, approximately...
But Medicare is normally the prime, especially on elderly people.
Well, yes, and approximately fifty percent of your transports are either Medicare or Medicaid patients. But you have other, you have other, all kinds of, and you have many people that, you know, appreciate, especially in this state, you know, coverage has been theoretically a requirement. From a practical standpoint, some, some of the benefits do run out, and there is no coverage, and there is no, if the person's not working. And some people have policies, especially this is more recent, the last two, three years, with the Affordable Care Act, some of the policies that have been qualified under that, the act, don't cover ambulance. It's a bare bones coverage, and it doesn't, so there is no coverage for that particular service. So, you know, it's, it's, not everybody has coverage. And then you have people who, who, they do have full coverage, but their deductible is, let's say, twenty-five hundred dollars, and they've got a fifteen hundred dollar ambulance bill, and one hundred percent, and that, the, in most cases, the ambulance bill goes against the deductible. So they could have a full balance. They are insured, but not for that event.
They haven't meant their deductible.
Right. And so you can, those are scenarios. So it's not, not all those folks where there's no payment, or nothing allowed, or anything like that. That doesn't mean they weren't insured, just means, for whatever reason, the coverage didn't pay in full, or didn't pay at all because of either the type of product, or the fact that it went against the deductible. Or it could be a copay. There are some, still some products that are percentage based, and it's not like a flat hundred bucks. It's, you know, seventy, thirty, eighty, twenty.
Eighty, twenty plans?
They're not as common, they're more expensive, but they're still out there.
The difficult thing about this also is the fact that we all know that hospitals have to provide a certain amount of, they call it free care, it's not free, the hospital has to eat the costs. But in this particular case, we're talking about a small town who has provided ambulance service for who knows how long, probably forever, or close to it. The town of Dayton, unlike the hospital that quite frankly budgets for this kind of a thing, because they know they have to provide a certain amount of care to people who can't pay or have no insurance, this is a killer for the town of Dayton. I mean, we don't have a budget line item that would offset the loss of these kinds of receivables. We're not like the big hospitals that, that, you know, they tell you each year how much they have to provide, and of the amount they have to provide, how much they actually did provide, because it's a requirement of their operation. It doesn't happen in small towns, so it's a real killer. Three hundred, over three hundred thousand, it's a fortune in this town. And this is tax money. This is not grant money, this is not, somebody was generous and gave the town a gift to cover these expenses or anything else. This is raise and appropriate, this is tax money. And, you know, it's, 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 it's a killer, and people watching this tonight are probably saying, where was this board of selectmen? Well, folks, this board of selectmen found out about it, and it's being discussed. But I certainly can't lay blame on previous boards of selectmen. I sat on the board five years ago, was not aware of this. I've been on the finance committee, I think, except when I was a selectman back then and now, since, I'm going to guess, two thousand and two. This never, ever came up until this year, and it was a result of this audit report. So for all of you townspeople that are probably sitting in your home shaking your heads, join the group, because this matter has got to get resolved before this fiscal year ends. And that's why we asked Rick and Tony to come in tonight, because this has got to be done publicly. There has got to be a written explanation sent to this board. This board has got to take action on that. This board has got to take action on that. And based on everything I can see here, the majority of this is going to have to be written off. This collection company, FRR, FFR, they can keep working on it. And if they get anything, we're going to get 2/3 of whatever they get. But the fact of the matter is, this is an awful...